We are about to begin the city council candidate portion of the forum. And we're very grateful to have seven of you candidates here with us tonight. And we will use the same format, so to get started, each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves and to share with you their qualifications. After that, we will take questions from the audience. Please give more because we're going to start recycling the mayoral questions. And so we have volunteers moving around with cards and with writing utensils. If you have any questions, they'll come and pick them up for you, or you can bring them up to the front desk here. With that, we will start with Mr., well, I should introduce. From my right to left, we have Doug Collier, Glenn Crainer, Josh Ellis, who is the only incumbent in this race, we have two seats open, Ryan Lewis, Jeff Mansfield, Craig Parish, and Earl Pippin. And we will begin opening remarks with Mr. Collier.
Thank you. We appreciate being here, and I personally appreciate the League of Women Voters who have traditionally done a lot for getting the public to know what the issues are and just bringing us the podium. I was, I grew up in the Salt Lake area, and that was kind of the first half of our lives. And then the second half has been here in Chubbick. We've lived here in Chubbick for just about 25 years. I started my career as a flight instructor, and then as a corporate pilot, I was a chief pilot for corporate flight operation, and then I was the flight operations manager for a Fortune 500. Okay, I was a flight operations manager for a Fortune 500 flight operation. And in that capacity, I learned a lot about big business and very detailed budgeting and meeting budgets, having good relationships with employees, and hiring and firing and so forth. And since we came to Chubbick, I've owned two businesses and came to this point to where I am now retired. And I've been attending city council meetings for about the last six months and just decided that this was some service that I needed to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crainer?
My name is Glenn Crainer. I live in Chubbick. I was born and raised in southeastern Idaho. I've attended schools here, Polk Town High School, Idaho State University, and VOTEC. Following our experience with military, my wife and I moved back to Polk Town and then relocated into Chubbick, where we raise five children, and we currently have 13 grandchildren, many of whom still live in our community. While we were raising our children, I had the opportunity to work with youth in Chubbick as both a coach for girls in basketball, for girls and boys in basketball, softball for girls, baseball for young men. I was also involved with the scouting program for over 30 years, not only as a member of the scout committee, but also as a scout master, where I had the personal opportunity to see 10 young men achieve the rank of Eagle Scout. I retired after a successful career at the University of Chicago Railroad, where I finished up being the supervisor over safety training and technical training. The opportunity that I had there was at the railroad, they became employee conscious and wanted to start a new environment of safety. And it was there that I learned that we need to bring people together, both management and employees, and we learned how to bring people together and share ideas and create goals for both individuals. Have strong commitment to accountability and individual rights as a citizen. I started attending the city council meetings about three years ago. It was there that I watched how some suggestions from citizens fell by the wayside. I saw how taxpayer funding was utilized, perhaps not to the fullest potential. I watched how expenditures in our budget didn't quite match up as we started to go away from the budgeting process and go to emergency purchases, and I feel that we can do a little better job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ellis?
Again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this. As was stated, I currently serve on the city council. Essentially born and raised in the community, I was actually born in Downey, and then my parents moved over to Willard Street when I was about four years old. By the time I was 10 years old, I was living on Moses Street in Paradise Acres. Spent my summers riding a 10-speed bike to and from Cotamp Park, Hawthorne Junior High, and Highland High School. I still remember the sign on Siphon Road that said "Population," and it was around 4,977 is the number that sticks in my mind as I continually rode that 10-speed. I don't know if my wife would let my children ride a 10-speed across town. But I feel that that makes me uniquely qualified to continue serving on the city council. Graduate of Highland High School, graduated from Idaho State University. I was a medic in the Idaho Army National Guard. I spent my summers and my Saturdays sweeping out houses and going to the dump. Most kids grew up on a farm removing pipe. All I spent my Saturdays working and building things with my hands. As you look at the city of Chubbick right now, that is the bulk of what the city of Chubbick is experiencing right now. How will we manage that growth? How will we manage the needs of our competing constituencies within the city? And I feel that I have the ability to handle those issues. And so I appreciate your time and your willingness to consider me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ellis?
Thank you.
And bonus points, they have to share the mic.
I may give it to him. My name is Ryan Lewis. I am a local attorney in the area here. And as such, I think my children would agree that my nature is to ask difficult and probing questions and to avoid generalities that so often are present in government and in decision-making. I've been married to Kimberly Lewis, my wife, for 17 years. We have five children. I have a sophomore at Highland. I have two sons and a daughter who are at Hawthorne Middle School. And I have two sons who are at the Montessori School out of Tahiti. I was born and raised in this area. My folks are Steve and Barbara Lewis, longtime residents of the area. And I'm in the middle of seven children. And I graduated, I went through local school here, I went to Wilcox Elementary School, I went to Hawthorne Junior High School, Polk Town High School. I graduated from Idaho State University with a degree in finance. After graduation from Idaho State University, I went to the University of Idaho College of Law, where I got my Juris Doctor degree. And I've been practicing in Polk Town for about 10 years now as a lawyer. My reason for running for the city council is not some desire to come in and grind an axe, to clean it up, because I think we live in a pretty darn good place. You look at what we have around here, and it's because of things that have gone on for many years before us. My desire is to become a city councilman, to employ the skills that I have learned through my training and education, to continue to make Chubbick a good place to live. Perfect decisions will not always be made. I'm not going to look in hindsight and judge decisions that have already been made.
Thank you. Mr. Mansfield?
First of all, thank you very much for hosting this forum and allowing us this opportunity to meet with the public and kind of express our points of view. It's amazing how far our country has come from not even having women having the right to vote, to where now we have a league of women voters. And I've always been really impressed with the women voters in Chubbick. They've helped at the polls, and they've always helped get those processes implemented and helped make sure that those go off without a hitch. As you mentioned, my name is Jeff Mansfield. I'm originally from Labahaw Springs. I graduated from Marsh Valley High School, so don't hold that against me. But right after, two weeks after I graduated from high school, I joined the Air Force Reserves, where I just recently retired last year after serving 23 years in the Air Force Reserve. While I was, my wife and I, after we got married, I went to ISU. We both went to ISU and graduated from there. While I was at ISU, I served as the student body president of the School of Pipe Technology, and I also was an ASISU senator. I've always had a strong interest in politics and enjoyed being involved in my community. In the Air Force, I served as a superintendent of the Civil Engineering Flight, and I also served in Operation Enduring Freedom in Afghanistan in 2010. I've always had a strong commitment and desire to work with the youth. I'm currently a Boy Scout leader. I've been involved with the youth football and baseball programs in Chubbick, and I'm also currently involved in the Chubbick Polk Town Hockey Association. In fact, I was talking to Steve Smart today about some of the work that we're doing over there. I currently work as a civil engineer, and I'm involved with multiple communities, and I help them to get things implemented similar to the issues that we have here in Chubbick, and I hope I can do a good job.
Thank you. Mr. Parish?
Thank you. My name is Craig Parish. I'm from here. I was born at St. Anthony Community Hospital, apparently in somewhat precarious circumstance. I was shortly baptized there after before mom regained her wits, which I appreciate, and they took care of that for me. I was taken home to my home on Parish Lane, where I lived until I was 10 years old and moved up to the house that we're in now. I live in the house that I grew up in. I have lived there forever. I bought it from mom 10 or 12 years ago and have lived there ever since. I spent a few years away at school, but I've been in this community essentially all my life. I did have to go outside the community to find a wife. I pray my reputation preceded me a little bit, and so I had to go all the way to North Carolina to get a good one. And I did, but I brought her home. And so now my obligation most years is to go to the poll to try to correct her vote. I'm not sure we have much impact if she votes one way and I vote the other. I'm here because I have five boys, and I want those five boys to live here. I want to have grandkids here. I have one sister that moved away. She's in Texas. And my father used to say, grandkids in Texas aren't much good. Can't get any hugs out of those kids. And he's right about that. I want my boys to marry good women and stay here in this community so that my grandkids are here for me to give a hug to, to help take care of them and be part of their lives. That can only happen if we have jobs here for them. We've got to build this community in such a way that those jobs exist, so they can come here and be a part of this community, as we have been all of my life, been part of developing this community. I've been there with my dad. I used to ride on the fire trucks when I was a kid, because my dad and his brothers started that fire department 50 years ago. I love this town. I'm here by choice. I want to stay here, and I want my kids to be able to stay here. And I believe that I can make a difference on the Chubbick City Council to make that a reality by helping to manage and control our future, which I know is bright, and I hope to help make it that way.
Thank you. Mr. Pippin?
Thank you. During the 20 years that I've lived in Chubbick, I've been privileged to see a lot of positive progress, and I hope that by serving on the city council, I can continue to be a part of that. I think our city employees have done a good job, and I think that needs to continue. For more than 20 years, I served in the United States Air Force, and from that, I've learned, come to understand how you accomplish a mission using beautiful and limited resources. I've had the opportunity over the last couple of weeks or three weeks to visit with Mayor England and our Fire Chief and Chief Sevier in the Police Department, Steve Smart, Public Works, to learn more about the things, the challenges they face on a daily basis and educate myself and hopefully provide an informed service. I think we have high-quality people working in Chubbick and for Chubbick, and I'm looking forward to being associated with them and assume that that service is recognized and appreciated and rewarded. My professional experience in addition to 20 years in the Air Force, I've been in higher education for over 20 years as well. And I think that the key to having the kind of measured, sustainable growth that we need in Chubbick is effective communication, and that communication needs to be based on accurate, factual information and a clear willingness to communicate it among those involved. I've had experience in writing and executing community development plans. About 15 years ago, I helped write, I don't know if it's the first, but one of the early versions of the Chubbick Community Development Plan. And I've also worked as a consultant to help develop community development lending opportunities for financial institutions, and I look forward to continuing that. And I believe that I can do this as a member of the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Pippin. Now, we'll move right into audience questions. Each candidate will have the opportunity to address the question first, so for that, we'll start with Mr. Crainer. And the question is, what are your plans to improve city streets and specifically Stewart Street? And when will that happen?
I sympathize with that question for the fact that a month ago, I was in an accident, and I fractured some ribs. And I found that I couldn't drive down Stewart in my vehicle and be comfortable. And there were also several other streets. Going to the city council, this is the first year that funds have been earmarked specifically for road repairs. As they have gone through the budget, they have dedicated funds for road repair. Now, to do that, they had to go itemize that budget. So we have to change our budget process from what we have done in the past and go from the zero-budget base. We have to itemize our projects with our needs versus our wants. As we do that, we can line those streets up and put them in the priority that they need to be. Rather than be a last-ditch effort at the end of the year, if we have money left over, we need to move those up on the priority list. As we work that budget and create a zero-based budget, we have the opportunity to do that and allocate the funds without raising the taxes of the individual citizens.
Thank you. Mr. Ellis?
Depending on who you're talking to, Stewart Street might be the most important one, or Country Acres, or Dell Road, or Whittaker Road. And generally, that's what you'll find, is depending on who you're talking to in the city, their road's the most important road. Over the next nine years, the Chubbick Development Authority is planning to spend $9.5 million in rebuilding roads. Our goal for being at a 10-year plan of resurfacing the roads, that's the maintenance line item that I asked for and that I felt that we should look at creating, so that every 10 years, we're able to resurface all of the roads within the city of Chubbick. That should extend their life. Some of these roads cannot be resurfaced. You've driven them. They need to be torn up and rebuilt. The budget is not going to allow us to find or earmark $3 million in one specific year to start doing specific roads. And most of these major road projects are going to be anywhere from $750,000 to $2 million. So the way that you do that is you have to actively go out and grow the community and then take those funds from the CDA in order to get more roads, or get more money to build more roads.
Oh, I need to...
I was trying to follow. She was...
Thank you.
Sign one up, but I...
I was so enjoying the next question. Mr. Lewis?
Much like a family has a budget, and if your family's anything like my family, it seems like bad things come in waves. And as a family, you have to budget, and you have to figure out what is your first priority and what is your second priority, what is your priority all the way to the last priority, and attack those things one at a time. As Mr. Ellis said, there are a number of streets that need more than improvement. They need replacement. It was mentioned earlier by Councilman England that to replace a very short section of road, about 75 feet, I believe was the amount, that was how much money's been earmarked for city funds, and that's not going to replace Stewart Road. However, as a city councilman, I would work with the Chubbick Development Alliance that has funds earmarked to replace roads, not resurface, replace roads that need that, including Stewart and including Dell, and including other roads that are beyond repair at this point. As a council, we don't make the decisions for the Chubbick Development Authority, but we can certainly make recommendations and go to them and ask for their support. That's what I would do. I would ask them to take a hard look at where the first priority is, just like a family would do, what's the first priority, and attack it that way. And that's what I would do to repair Stewart and the other roads that need it.
Thank you. Mr. Mansfield?
The spring of this year, I live on Dell Road, and the spring of this year looked somewhat like an obstacle course, the spring, because of all the cones that they had out and the open potholes. And so I can relate directly with this concern, and I think the most important role and most important thing that we can do is put together a plan where, in that plan, we, first of all, we need to evaluate what the condition of the roads are. We need to figure out exactly what their condition are, what needs to be replaced first, what the priorities are. We need to set priorities and then look at the budget and figure out how much we can replace each year. Another thing that we need to really look at, too, is we need to try to look at our infrastructure below those roads. It doesn't make a lot of sense to come in and put in a brand-new road and then tear it up a year later to put in a water line. So we need to make sure that we're evaluating our priorities and that we're looking and planning effectively for the future.
Thank you. Mr. Parish?
Like Mr. Ellis, I always rode my bike over to Stewart Park, because that's the only baseball field we had when I was that age. I hit my first and one of my only home runs right there on that very first field on the south side, just because that was a real short fence. I've been over Stewart Park pretty regularly, because my kids go over to the library over there, and that road's terrible. But you can say that about any number of them, and it depends on who you're talking to about which road is worse. How do we decide which one's got to be fixed first? And the answer to that is, we've got some fantastic men and women employed by this city who evaluate those roads on a daily basis. And they come to us and say, this is the one that's got to have it first, and this one's got to have a second. Let's figure out how to make that happen. How do we make it happen? Well, money's the problem. It'd be really nice if we could fix all of them, have big, nice, fancy new roads. But the reality is, we don't have the money to do that. And so we have to prioritize and decide what's going to be most important first. We do that through using our qualified and experienced people who are in position to do that. We raise the money by bringing in business and industry to increase our tax base, to have the revenue stream that allows us to improve those roads the way we want them to look. Today, the Nudes and Boulevard looks fantastic. It's because there's nothing on it. None of the rest of them look like that, but it's because we're using them. It's good that they're wearing out. It means we're using them. We've got to figure out how to keep them up. We do that by raising that tax base, by raising that revenue, and by using our experienced professionals to give us the advice that we need.
Thank you. Mr. Pippin?
Well, I'd just like to put in a vote for Victor Avenue in the neighborhood right there. His mic's not working.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you pull the mic to your mouth, or is it...
I think it's telling me if I were any closer.
Oh, yeah.
It's not working. It's not working. Okay, we'll try this. Like I said, Victor Avenue is one of those that would be on a personal priority, but I understand that there is a plan in place. There's a schedule over the next seven or eight years to address all of the roads in Chubbick City. And we know that we can't do it all at once. And I think that priority has been established. It's subject to negotiation, I would presume. And I think we have a plan in place, and I think we just need to follow the plan and follow up on the needed work. Thank you.
Mr. Collier?
I have noticed that there have been, most cities have a committee to address major problem areas. And I would think that, I would encourage a committee to be asked by the mayor and the council of citizens who really know what they're talking about, to evaluate the situation of the roads. But not only the roads, but we haven't talked about water. There are other things that are pressing also besides the roads. And I would see that this committee could go out and see how other cities have dealt with these same problems, which probably are exactly the same as we have, and bring back recommendations for us to implement in our particular situation. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question will go first to Mr. Ellis. Do you agree or disagree with the city council's decision to purchase additional water rights during the recession? Please explain your position.
During the first probably six months that I was on the council, we started to receive information concerning our water usage. In the city of Chubbick, at the peak times in the summer, when individuals are watering their yards and getting ready to go to work, or when they're coming home and watering their yards, we were pumping more water than what we actually had rights to pump. The question is, do you get caught, and what happens? Kind of like, you know, if you can get your hand in the cookie jar and sneak a cookie without your mom knowing it, maybe you're all right. During that same time, we started to see the water rates were increasing. When I say increasing, the amount to purchase them was increasing. Three out of the last four years, your water rate has stayed the same. It has not increased. And so we have purchased those additional water rights without having to raise the water rates. If you wait too long, then you end up paying more, and I can't think of any other resource that's more important in this particular community than water. Now, the other thing that we've done to make sure that that culinary water that we're buying, which is extremely expensive, doesn't just go to watering yards, is that we require new development and developers to be in secondary water, so that hopefully we're watering yards with non-culinary water to make it so that we don't have to buy as much water.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
I was at that city council meeting when the vote was taken. It was a unanimous decision. I agree with the decision to buy the water rights. I thought that the correct decision was made. Were there streets that could have been repaired with that money? There were. Were there other services that could have been improved? Yes. Could we have decreased the cost of services and foregone that? Yes. There were a lot of things that could have been done instead. But I mentioned my family here. A lot of times, we have to look for things that are on sale. And maybe we buy more of something when it is on sale, so that we have it when it's no longer on sale. And a city council is smart to make decisions like that, just like a household. If you go out and pay the regular price for something every time you need it, you're not going to be as efficient. The city did that with those water rights. I believe that they made the right decision. And while it took money away from other good and appropriate projects, it was a wise decision when it was made, and I think they made the right decision.
Thank you, Mr. Mansfield.
Thank you. So as a civil engineer, I deal with this issue on a daily basis, and I help communities work through the plans that they need to do in order to meet their water and wastewater needs that they have for the future. Typically, you try to plan out for a minimum of 20 years in the future. And I'll guarantee you this, the water rights, the price of water rights are not going to go down. They're going to become more and more difficult, and I think it was the right decision. I think the city of Chubbick has done an outstanding job with implementing irrigation systems and conserving their water through the use of metering and conservation. You know, as a community, we have paid for a water facilities planning study, which projects our water use for the foreseeable future. And I think as a city council, I think they made the right decision in purchasing those water rights in order to meet the needs of the future growth of the city. If you can't provide water to a community or to a development, you can't build it. You can't have a development without water and wastewater in that area.
Thank you. Mr. Parish?
We live in a desert. Sometimes it's hard to remember that, because we have policies and practices in place where we're trying to make everything green and lush and verdant and wonderful. We still live in a desert. And if we're making it lush and green and wonderful, it's typically a desert. We're using water in ways that may not be the best use for that water. The fact is, it becomes a wants versus need analysis. Our needs have to be met. Our wants sometimes have to say, you know, we can't afford them. We don't have to have every spare patch of ground be covered with grass and trees. There's ways to do xeriscation that can be attractive and functional without spending money on water that should not be used in that way. We need to do an analysis of our existing codes and regulations to make sure that we are conserving that water for the use... codes and regulations to make sure that we are conserving that water for the uses that are necessities and not wants. I think it was a great decision, when that kind of resource commodity is available, if we have the budget to make it happen. And if we are able to meet some needs without infringing upon other needs that may be even more important, we need to make that kind of a decision. And I think our city council did a great job, and I salute them. I frankly would tell them anytime water rights come available, take a real good look, because this is a desert. And whoever gets them first is going to get them. We're not going to get them back. There's no more water coming. What there is, there is. And if we can get more of it, we ought to get it, as long as we can do that without depriving ourselves of needed social services. Good decision. I salute them for it.
Thank you. Mr. Pippen?
Well, like others that have spoken, I think the decision to purchase the water rights was a good one. I happened to be in that same city council, and had I been on the council, I would have supported that decision with my vote. As I've studied over the years, the history of the West, I can't think of anything that has been at the root of more discord than issues regarding water. And all of us can remember seeing programs where neighboring farmers couldn't agree on whose water turn it was and those kinds of things. I think the kind of decision that the council made to purchase these water rights will help us to avoid some of those kind of very real problems. Water, if we don't have sufficient water for community use, it seems to me like all of the other things involved with development and progress come to a screeching halt. So if we can avail ourselves of affordable water, water that we can afford, even if it's more than what we would like to pay, I think we should continue to do that kind of thing. I'd echo what Greg said, in that if we get another chance to make that kind of purchase, we ought to look on the heart at doing the same thing.
Thank you. Mr. Collier?
I think the thing that we've got to remember is that there's only so much water available. And we can't get water unless someone is willing to give up their rights to that water and sell it to us. And as a result, I think that was an excellent decision. As I understand it, I was also at that council meeting, as I understand it, there was a certain amount that we paid extra for that, that we were able to take out of contingency funds in order to cover that and make an excellent purchase. The one thing that we've got to think about now, I think that my sense is that we are doing pretty good at this point after this purchase on the amount of water that we have. But now we've got to get it out of the ground. The other thing that you have to realize is that you can't just go out and buy water and pump that much water out of the ground, because there are different types of water. If you buy farming water, then you have to convert it into city water, and that doesn't convert gallon per gallon. So it's a very complicated, complicated thing to work that out. So there's got to be a lot of work done by the city.
Thank you. Mr. Crainer?
It's a good question about this water. I guess we could ask by show of hands, how many of you would be willing to give up fifty percent of your water so that we could develop a new subdivision? None of you want to give up your water. But in order to grow, we have to provide the necessities for growth. Water is a necessity. We use it every day from the moment we get up to the last thing we do before we go to bed. It's a necessity of life. And so when a commodity comes up, such as water, do you pass on it and say, a better deal will come up in six months? It hasn't happened. The water rights have risen continually for the last ten years. If you look at the water rights that the city has bought, we were able to buy water rights six and seven years ago cheaper than we're buying it now. And it doesn't matter for the recession. We're in an economic boom. Water is vital to our life support. It's mandatory that we purchase those water rights anytime they become available. Thank you.
Thank you. This question will first go to Mr. Lewis. How are you planning to keep spending within the budget or lower, yet expand and grow the city?
I think that the expansion and growth of the city and the budget go hand in hand. The city and the city council have done a good job of increasing our infrastructure to support additional growth. We've been in a recession, and I think the indicators are that we are slowly coming out of that recession. The city council and the mayor have done a good job of putting us in a position where we can go and find commercial development and commercial enterprises. We have a brand-new Knudsen Boulevard because of the CDA that has made it so that we can bring people in and increase our tax base. And by increasing our tax base, we're going to be able to support and sustain the growth. Because we have water that has been purchased, because we have sewer systems that are over the capacity of what we need at this point, we are able to sustain growth, and we are able to come out of a recession running instead of scrambling. I think the city council and the mayor have done a good job of laying a foundation that will allow us to take off running. We won't need to be doing those things that other municipalities may be doing when we're trying to get the lead on coming out of this recession. And so when we increase our tax base, we're not going to have to worry about the increases that will come along with that growth, because we'll be able to put them toward that tax.
Thank you. Mr. Manskin?
It's a good question. You know, it's just like a household budget. You only have a finite amount of money coming in, and you have a certain amount of bills that you have to pay every month. And somehow you need to make those balance. One of the questions that was asked during the mayoral forum was about the highest, that Chubak has the highest rate of taxes in the state of Idaho, and how that was going to be. Ultimately, the answer is not higher taxes. The answer is a higher tax base.